City looks like it's under siege with trash. It's like trash is like everywhere. I make a lot of phone calls to your office or the code enforcement to Pam quite a bit during the course of the week and also solid waste because I just keep seeing trash, 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 trash. And I'm not, I know I'm not the only one. So my question is, is there any like new idea, something creative that is being put in place to change the way this city looks because it's very undesirable?
Absolutely. I, I think that we share your frustration and when you look at the numbers, it does seem to be, there seemed to be an uptick in, in the number of illegal dumpings. And again, it is perplexing to think around like what's driving that. But we have started conversations, again, if, the, the way that we've started talking about it within the administration is again, like what doesn't make it in the bin makes it out in the street and the alleys or in private property. So we have started conversations with our partners in the Department of Public Works and across different teams within my department to try to figure out creative solutions to address that problem. As you point out, it's gonna, I think that we, it's time to revisit how is it that we address the issue? And, and the reality is if, if we're not paying through it through rates, we're usually paying through it from code. And as we know, it's also very difficult to recover all of the costs from code enforcement. Right now, the collection rate is only at 6%. So in some sense, we end up subsidizing a lot of that waste collection. And, and the more important part, as you point out, this residents end up getting frustrated and, and it is insalubrious and it is just, just not good to have all the trash. So we will be working again, as hopefully as we turn the page with the pandemic and we start restoring some of the, the enforcement mechanisms that we normally use, plus some new ideas that we can really make a dent. But if you, if you or others in the community have ideas, we were, we're really open to hearing suggestions and, and thinking creatively and outside of the box to this problem.
I'll be emailing you.
Thank you.
You, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Mr. Wax.
Thank you. And I, I appreciate that it has been very difficult to do your job there in code enforcement over the past year. Now that the processes are opening up, do you expect the numbers to, at least on a prorated level, to, to match as they've been prior to the pandemic?
I think so. I think that there's a couple of trends that are, if you look at the, the numbers, some of the numbers even from 2019 were a little bit higher than before. So again, there's, there are certain things and certain patterns that seem to be changing. And I think that we need to understand why that is. I wouldn't be able to tell you, but my hope is that we, we get to a more stable normal. But we are working, kind of thinking about getting more creative around how is it that we can get to the outcomes that we want to see in a more cost efficient manner, but also in a manner that is a little bit more dignified, right? Like if we have a resident that has an issue, that some of the, you know, one of, some of the larger pickup, you know, like if you have a, a large illegal dump in your property, might cost up to $750 to clean up. So in some sense, how is it that we can figure out ways of picking up the trash or even preventing the illegal dumping in the first place, which saves the city money from having to go and pick up, you know, picking stuff individually is time consuming and makes the neighborhood clean even without having to, you know, like have the dumping and cleaning up. So I do, the, the numbers will, will match more closely. And if we are able to put in some of these innovative tools and they're successful, I think that we can get to even better levels.
Thank you.
Mr. Lee.
Good evening, Santi. It's again, great to hear, uh, you, see your presentation. I, I was with some residents this weekend and they asked me some pretty, uh, pretty steep questions and, and, and so I needed to find out from you, what happens when a resident is deemed a nuisance and the process on getting some kind of reaction from, from code enforcement?
Yeah, I think I'll, I'll speak within the boundaries of what I know. And again, there's people that I work with that are much more knowledgeable. And I think that last that I was in South Bend, Keenan Lane in the police department was the expert on dealing, especially with, on the police side of things. So obviously, when there's code violation issues, the city can go and run its, you know, like its process. And eventually the property is kind of recurrent in having code issues, they usually get placed on their, this continuous enforcement mechanism where we basically inform the resident that they are on notice and they are supposed to keep the property clean. And if they don't, we have the ability of abating and, and addressing the violations. And there's some fines and other things associated with that. I think that one of the things that is most frustrating from residents is that a lot of times people, you know, get really frustrated about some of their neighbors. And the challenge is we have to go through this due diligence and through this process that, you know, like we, there's strong property rights as well. So we, we usually work within the confines of what the ordinances allow us to do. So before we do anything that extends from writing tickets or whatnot, we would be able to send some of these troubled properties to an environmental hearing with their hearing officer. And there's the potential of assessing even more fines, but there's certain limits to what we can do. And, and I, that can be frustrating. But if, if people have issues and concern, we, we do want to hear from them. And I know that sometimes we can't take action as quickly as they wish, but, but we do want to hear and, and work with the residents to try to address these properties.
And then my second question is, we have several, several businesses, like Family Dollars that trash, wherever you, you, you look at in those locations, they're not, they're not keeping them up. And it's, it's, it's making our neighborhoods look terrible. And it's a company that's benefiting from the neighbors and they won't keep the trash up. And this is, several of them I've, I've gone to and it's just been amazing, the amount of trash that's outside that they're not keeping up. What do we do for businesses who, who benefit from our community, but won't keep up a, a quality standard?
Yeah, obviously, that's a, that's of concern. I, I'd have to check with the team to give you more specific information on, on any specifics. But obviously, the, the code of ordinances are, apply, in my understanding, when, when they apply across the board, they apply across the board. So we'll hold up the residence, you know, for residential and commercial properties to like, to high standards and make sure that the city is clean and, and safe for everyone. So I will ask your, your comments to the team and hopefully we can look into it.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I can send you pictures.
That'd be good.
Councilwoman Nizgatsky.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. The one question that I have, I know we get to, I only really have one question. Fire properties. I have a property in my district that has been there since October of last year. In the normal course of, of how it's determined when they're torn down, do you have any idea? Like, is it normally within three months, four months, six months? I mean, what's the expectation that we should wait? Because this, that was like October, this is April, and residents are calling me again saying, we know it was an insurance thing is what I, we were told. So where does the role come in if, if it is insurance? How do we force them to, if they've, especially maybe they've had that claim paid out already? What's the recourse of action with these fire properties? And it's very unstable. I mean, I know code enforcement did go back, they did, it's a 2,600 block of Huron. They did go back and do some cleanup and around the area, but the neighbors are still really unhappy that that building is, you know, is still standing there, or that home.
Yeah, I would talk kind of in broad terms as well, because some of these questions would probably be better dealt by my team who has more, more expertise on the details. But again, generally, it is the responsibility of the owner to maintain the properties. In some sense, like even if the property is burned down, it's still the property owner is responsible for doing the demolition. And, and if they're insured, using the funds from the, from the insurance company to, to do so. This is where if they are unable to do it, there's limited amounts of funds for, for demolition from the city actually carrying out the demolition. And usually, again, the process involves bidding and, you know, like getting a demolition order affirmed by the, by the, by the housing, by the code hearing officer and, and, and then bidding out the, the, the project and, and getting out. And then the challenge is that, you know, even if the city does it, then we, we then get into the issue of trying to collect the money and get the money back. So it's, that's money that's not always easy to collect because people might be trying to, you know, anyways. So again, another one that's frustrating and a, a lot of the issues with code rely on people, it's, it's on the individuals to do the work. And unfortunately, people look at code enforcement to try to address the situations. And, and a lot of times what we have to do is work within the boundaries of what the, what the code allows us to do. And then also the limits of the financial resources to be able to address the property. So I believe, I, I believe that I've seen some correspondence around that property. So I know that it's in the radar. It's just, again, we're, we're trying to exhaust the, the recourse and, and make sure that the, that the owners take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman, Thomas Morgan.
Thank you, Chair McBride. I, Mr. Garces, thank you for being here a second time and this update on code this time. I was just wondering, following up on some of my council colleagues' questions. To what extent are we having conversations as a, you know, with our, with our Silver Cities designation and, and being a part of the Bloomberg Consortium on, on these kinds of issues, litter, enforcement of code? And so are, are we currently, is there, is there a, a special group that we might, or conversation within that consortium that we could join and, and learn more from other cities' best practices on these topics?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, we, again, I, I think that in, in many ways, we, we collaborate with other cities and other groups to try to, to try to improve some of this. And we've, in the past, I know that, not, not specific only to code, but with other groups, we brought some of the people that, that developed the innovation training curriculum from Denver, with, that we brought them to South Bend when I was in the Department of Innovation and, and Technology. And we work closely with, with people in other areas. It's, I, I will say, having been in, in Pittsburgh prior to coming to South Bend, I think that this is part of the challenge of having a city that isn't growing quite as quickly. If you look at the, you know, like in, in Pittsburgh, which is a city that's rapidly kind of redeveloping, also rust built, post industrial city, there's so much investment in property in the, in the neighborhoods, that the issue is almost like, how do they keep up with new licensing? As opposed to how do you manage kind of the, the K of the properties that hasn't, that haven't been invested as much? So, but I'll, I'll put a note in my notebook about trying to figure out which other cities and other groups are working on interesting solutions. And, and we'll report back if they have interesting solutions, especially as Councilman Davis pointed out, if there's a, like a, the moonshot equivalent of trash, as that we can address in a more sustainable, smarter way, our waste, in a way that, that builds better equity and that respects the, our communities much better.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Garces. I'm curious about the imposing of fines. And I know that is a necessary component, but I'm putting it in the perspective of just having had a conversation around the significant decline in incomes and people that are right on the edge. And I'm wondering how fines for this can be. I'm not sure what the, the question would be. Is there something that residents can do other than being issued these fines? Are there programs to assist them, to keep them from these certain behaviors? There are just some people that might need, I mean, we do it for a lot of other issues in the city. And I'm just wondering if helping people to maintain their properties is, is something else that we can also provide for them?
Absolutely. I, I mean, it is an area of concern. And I think that the, in the spirit of the question that you're asking, that's the reason why the mayor made the decision of, of putting a hold on, on issuing tickets and kind of trying to, even though it does generate issues and, and, you know, like people get unhappy with, with trash and some, and the delay of some of these other processes. So typically, the process for code enforcement works in such a way that any resident that is in violation of code enforcement gets issued a notice and they're given an opportunity to obey, okay, clean up the situation themselves. Then after some time, they, code enforcement re-inspects the property. And if the issue persists, that's when the city will go and issue a fine or go and take care of the, of the issue, but then build the, the resident back for, for the work that's on. But as you point, you know, like thinking about some of our low income communities, paying a $400 fee for, for remediating an illegal dump can be quite steep. So I'd just say, a lot of what our code, what our code enforcement inspectors and the staff do is they, they end up being almost like caseworkers, trying to navigate and trying to connect people with, with resources to address these issues. And my goal for the department would be to try to, and this is why we, I think that the spirit of bringing code enforcement into community investment is trying to foster a better connection between what are the programs that can help those people that have issues, so that they can address the issues before we have to use enforcement so that, and it also saves time and money, right? If they're able to just fix it, instead of going and chasing after, after a problem, we can just get it taken care of and, and be a little bit more dignified in the treatment to, to our residents. So definitely something that we're working on and hopefully we'll, we'll keep working on that towards the next budget and, and going into the future.
Thank you.
Councilman Warner.
I have no questions.
Oh, good, I can take yours. I have a couple of questions, but I think it will be relevant for the council as a whole to understand. Is there some kind of way that we can find out? It's great that we have the GPS on the trucks and can monitor the times that trash was picked up. But how can the public be made more aware of when it comes to right sizing their trashcans? Because there are a lot of units out there that have, I think it's 96 gallon barrels, but some of them only have the 48, like one small one, or, or they have two small ones, but staff is still only picking up one of the trash bins. And so it's still stand over. So I, I don't think all of our trash containers are not right sized, but people are still only getting one bin picked up as opposed to getting both of them picked up.
Absolutely. I mean, I think that you point to, make a great point in that the, the issue of trash is not one that is contained in code enforcement. It is an issue that also is related to solid waste, right? In some sense, they're complement, they're two sides of the same coin. So I don't have an answer right now on that, but that's the, the type of question that I, I tell you, I've, we've been starting, uh, working together with Deputy Director of Public Works, Jatin Kane, and with, with the solid waste team to start figuring out that puzzle. And hopefully, I think that as we move forward and think about solutions around solid waste and, and the issue of trash in the streets, that we can hopefully come up with something that is more holistic. So I don't have a good answer for you now. I will, I'll, I'll ask Jatin and their team, but definitely something to look into.
Thank you for that. The second one is overgrown weeds in the grass and alleys. Now that there's pickup in the front, there's a lot of overgrown alleys and code is not responsible, but homeowners should not be responsible either. And there's been kind of a gridlock of some of my residents trying to cut the alleyways, but it's too thick. So code came out there and cut some. But it's, it's a major problem now that the trucks are not going down the alleys consistently. It's a problem. So I didn't know if there was any discussion about how that can be not put on the homeowners. But I didn't know if it was private contractor or who does take care of that.
Yeah, I haven't heard of conversations yet about that issue, but I'll, I'll make a note and I'll, I'll ask to see if, what discussions might be occurring around this. And again, I know that, yeah, the, the maintenance and the, the good standing of the, the neighborhood is things that are of concern to residents. And sometimes it's a little bit tricky to figure out, you know, like whose responsibilities and how we get to pay for those things, like curbs and sidewalk and alleys. And some of these things are, are, are tough to sort out. But I will, I will ask and see if I can get you good information next time that we discuss this issue.
Thank you. And I know also on Miami, Miami Street specifically, to piggyback on Councilman Lee, there, there was a request for trashcans to be along the business corridor, because you have a lot of people that store on trash. And there are no trashcans on Miami. And it's putting the onus on the business owners, but it's also an example of where there's a lot of trash from whether people walking down the street or gas stations or groceries, the mini marks. And I've been requesting that and it's been going back and forth between code enforcement and the Parks Department for, since 2018. And so if, if you can please follow up to see if we can get at least one or two along some of the corridors, I think. And I don't know what department it's gonna fall under, but it's kind of like falling on deaf ears.
Sounds good. No, I, I will take a look at, at it. It seems that based on the frequency with, which we're talking, maybe my department will be the one. We'll, we'll take a look. No, well, I'm just joking. We'll, we'll take a look at the, at this. And, and again, I know that not particularly around this issue, but just making the pitch that I know that in the past year, we've expanded the, the, the coverage of the, the corridors program, the facade grants, that now cover Miami and, and a couple of other locations as well. So be a good opportunity as well as you're talking with, with some of the, those businesses to encourage them to apply for the, for the facade grants.
Thank you. And lastly, to follow up too, on some of the concerns is when you're talking about the houses or whether it's fire or structural damage, not just for the community, but the council as well, how we can troubleshoot and get better educated? Because specifically, I know it's been a house on Indiana and High Street that literally the front face of the house fell into the yard. And when I called code, code was gracious of, and cautious of moving it out of the sidewalk way, but it leads to safety concerns that the city should not and could not touch it. But the landlord, from my understanding, has a year to remedy the problem. So it's an eyesore in the community for a year. And we get the calls of, what are you doing? Or we're not doing anything, but there's other things that we, the city cannot do. So it's just not information out there for the neighbors to know what we have as a council or the city control of as a certain point. So I would love for us to have better communication with the constituents.
Definitely. We'll, we'll work on that. I think that that's a good idea of being able to share with you and with the residents of, around like what are some of those constraints or where in the process it lies. So a lot of times it's still frustrating, but at least it's better than just feeling that it's not getting addressed.
Thank you so much. Are there any other comments before we move on? Thank you so much, Mr. Garces. We appreciate it.
I appreciate you all. Thank you so much for having me and have a great rest of the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, I will now entertain a motion to resolve into the committee of the whole.
So move.
Second. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis. Eight ayes.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where the bills are given a second reading and a public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been first given, have been given a first reading and set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. And our first bill that we have, or the only bill, is Bill 8721, which I will need a motion to accept the substitute bill.
So move.
Second.
It's been a motion and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll? Yes. Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
I have a preliminary question, excuse me. Bob, is it still necessary that we do a roll each, every time since we're all back here together? We used to just like vote, you know, by, could be full acclamation or it could just be by vote, voice. And if somebody was to say nay, then you will have to go down the row and check everybody's name. But if no one says nay, it's just a aye and we just move on.
You're correct, Councilman Davis. This is our first meeting where everyone has been back.
I was just asking now.
No, no.
I'm here too now.
Everyone, everyone is here in person, so we are not having anyone vote virtually. So on anything other than voting on the legislation itself, you can do it by acclamation or, or just voice vote.
I got it. I was just putting that out there. I know we've been operating in a different format for over a year. So we, we're kind of like institutionalized right now because of the COVID. But I wanted to put that on the floor, that we don't have to do, that we don't have to do that anymore. Yeah.
Absolutely correct. And I was thinking about that earlier. I tend to do it.
Yeah, nothing against anyone, it's just, I just realized it. Yeah.
No, and thank you, thank you for that.
Right on, man. I, it went off in my head too.
We have been institutionalized by.
Yeah, code hooked us up.
Okay. Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill 8721 a second reading?
Yes. 8721, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 19, Article 1, Division 2, Section 19-13 of the South Bend Municipal Code to identify species of vegetation prohibited from sale, planting or propagating within the city, and amending Section 19-14 to identify species of vegetation prohibited in the tree and lawn areas in the city.
Okay, thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. The park committee met this afternoon and it is coming to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Chair Nizgatsky. And good evening, council. Name is Aaron Perry, Executive Director of South Bend Venues Parks and Arts Offices at 301 South St. Louis. of South Bend Venues Parks and Arts Offices at 301 South St. Louis Boulevard. Bill 8721 comes before you as the department seeks to continually increase our ecological acumen. And it's in compliance with our published Natural Resources Management Plan, which calls for updates to Chapter 19 of the municipal code. It calls for several updates. This is just one such example of those. I imagine over the course of the ensuing years, we're going to continue to come in front of you as, as we evolve this Chapter 19, which really governs the use and care of the outdoor spaces in our city. So the department's working closely with the Board of Park Commissioners and our Ecological Advocacy Committee. I'll introduce you to the Chair of that committee, Steve Sasse, to talk about the content of this particular ordinance amendment. But in short, this seeks to better, better manage the trees and shrubs that are permitted to be sold and planted in our city. It deals with invasive trees and shrubs that are really not only an environmental concern, but also an economic concern. So I keep saying that this bill is, is both. It's about the threatening of our wildlife and our natural environment and our associated ecosystems. But it's also costly to manage and mitigate these things, both on public and private lands. So we thank the council for looking at this. And I would want to turn it over to Steve Sasse, again, Chair of the Ecological Advocacy Committee, and really the originator of this piece of legislation. Steve, if you could introduce yourself.
Good evening. Steve Sasse, I am the Chair of the Ecological Advocacy Committee. We serve the Board of Park Commissioners. I put my address in the chat. I can give it again if you'd prefer, but it's in the chat, so I assume that's okay.
You need to, excuse me, Mr. Sasse, just say it for the record, please, the recording.
27910. I reside at 27910 U.S. Highway 20, New Carlisle, Indiana 46552.
Thank you.
And I'm going to attempt to screen share. And one second here. Do this the right way this time. Um, let's. Okay. And. Okay, can you see the screen now? At least it's not the full preset mode. Are you able to see the, my screen share?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I'll just go with this. So as the clerk read, this is amending Chapter 19, Article 1, Division 2, Sections 19, 13, and 19, 14. The Ecological Advocacy Committee is a nine person body that was formed by legislation by the Park Board of Commissioners. We have been in existence since 2017. And in 2021, we created a comprehensive Natural Resources Management Plan. One of the things that is in the management plan calls for updating this, this particular section of Code 19, 13, 19, 14, as well as, as other areas of Chapter 19, which are quite outdated. The origins of the revisions to 19, 13, 19, 14 came long before 2021. Back as far as 2018, we were looking at some of the, the things that we could do to better steward our natural areas in the city. That includes our park properties and some of our natural areas along the river. And invasive species are a major problem, not just for our community, but for literally every community in the country and probably the world. So the proposed rule changes that we have tonight, chapter, I'll go over what they are currently and then what the changes would be. So currently, Chapter 19, 13, or Chapter 19, Section 13 prohibits trees in the tree and lawn area of the city. That's, for those of you who may not know, it's the area between the typically the street and the, and the private property, normally the street and the, the area between the street and the sidewalk. These codes have, both have been in existence since 1962, so they're quite old. Chapter 14 has a ban on a genus of plants called Berberus. Berberus, back in the 1950s, was a plant that was an alternate host for a fungus that caused agricultural damage, particularly wheat stem rust. And back in 1962 was the last time that there was a major outbreak of this disease, or this fungus. And so they, the council took action back at that time to ban the Berberus plant in hopes of fixing the spread of, stopping the spread of the fungus. But that's not been a problem since the 1960s, since wheat resist, or rust resistant forms of wheat have been available for many decades, as well as fungicide. So these are, that's a very antiquated section of the, of the chapter. So what we've done is we've taken that, that 19, 13 area, and we've expanded it to, off of just the tree and lawn area, we've expanded it to a citywide vegetation list of prohibited species of vegetation. And the reason that we did this is to combat invasive vegetation. As Director Perry mentioned, they are a major problem in some of the areas of the city. And in order to get them under control, one of the first things we need to do is, is stop the, the inflow of new ones. So we've, we've repurposed Chapter 19, 13, off of just the tree and lawn area as a citywide prohibitive, prohibited plant species list. And we've tied that to the Indiana Invasive Species Council's official invasive list. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But and then Chapter 19, 14, we've removed that antiquated ban on Berberus, and we've moved over that, that tree and lawn area list of prohibited species. And also, while we were doing that, we worked with the city forester, who I know is on the call tonight, to revise that list to, for one thing, it didn't, the 1962 version did not contain taxonomic names, it only contained common names, which can be problematic, because they can, several species can share the same tax, common name. And, and also, we've updated it to reflect contemporary standards. So for example, like ash trees were not a problem to plant along city streets in 1962. But thanks to Emerald Ash Borer, they now would provide hazards, hazards, if we're planting them along the streets. So invasive species are big problems in this country. What we're talking about is the official USDA definition of invasive species is that these are species that are non-native or alien to the ecosystem under consideration, and whose introduction causes or is likely to cause economic or environmental harm or harm to human health. A lot of these invasive species, unfortunately, are not coming in the ballast of shipwater from Asia. They're coming from our garden centers. And biologists estimate, and according to one study at least, that 80% of our invasive plant species are just escapees from things that, that folks are planting in their lawns, or contractors are installing in new business developments and that sort of thing. To combat the problem of invasive species, back in 2009, then Governor Mitch Daniels signed legislation that created the Indiana Invasive Species Council. And the Invasive Species Council, their mission to enhance the ability of government agencies to detect, prevent, monitor, and manage new and long-established invasions, as well as increase public awareness about invasive species. One of the, the, under the charter that created it, it allowed them to create a committee, an invasive plant advisory committee. And the task for the invasive plant advisory committee was to come up with a list, which we call the official list, of invasive plant species in Indiana. And they, that came out in 2012, and initially contained 120 species of terrestrial and aquatic plants. In 2015, it was revised to now, I believe, have 126 species of plants on it. Out of that came the Indiana, Indiana terrestrial plant rule, which was signed by Governor Holcomb in March of 2019, and went into effect in 2020. And what that did was it prohibits the sale transfer barter of 44 of those species of invasive plants that were on there. It's enforced by the DNR Division of Entomology and Plant Pathology by nursery inspectors. This has been in place for over, right around a year now. At the time when this rule came out, all of the nurseries and retailers in Indiana were given copies of the Indiana terrestrial plant rule, and informed of what was now going to be illegal to sell and to grow. So as a summary, the, the list has 126 species, the, the official list of invasive plants. Of them, 13 are federally regulated, 66 of them are currently regulated by the state under three different means, and 47 of them are not currently regulated. And of those 33, of those 47, 33 of them are categorized with an invasive rank of either medium or high. And so what this bill does is essentially it adds these 47 species of plants to the prohibited list that already exists for South Bend by the federal and state regulations. We're, we're closing the gap on some of these nursery items that were perhaps left off of the original terrestrial plant rule, because they were still profitable for nurseries. So I'm going to end with this slide, and I'll be happy to take your questions, of course. So the challenges and the opportunities that we have moving forward with this. First of all, we consider this, we've looked at this always as less of an enforcement issue and more of an education issue. So we're not, we've never intended to have anyone, you know, travel into people's yards and give them tickets for having the wrong plant growing. We would like this to be a educational initiative where, where folks are voluntarily, hopefully, doing the right thing and making good, sound ecological choices for what they're putting in their, in their properties, which ultimately spreads outside of their properties in some cases. So as far as education goes, the first thing, utilize the EAC. The EAC is a nine person body right now of experts in various fields, including education. And the EAC will be able to come up with some action plans for helping to educate the public, implement educational white papers and videos to the VPA website. That's something we can certainly take advantage of, as well as doing community events, such as Arbor Day, Earth Day festivals, traveling to neighborhoods, getting into various neighborhood group meetings to do presentations for them, implementing a knowledge base article with 311, and also creating, working with the department to create various different types of marketing materials on what things they can be planting instead of the things that are maybe damaging to our environment and to our community, utilizing the new native tree trail at Pinhook Park, which has 40, I think around 40 now, native tree species to Indiana that can be planted, utilizing Spark Magazine. We also want to see this as an opportunity for, not necessarily a setback for local businesses, for us to say, we'd like for you to not be selling plants A, B, and C. Instead, if we can somehow get some of them to convert some of their inventory into some of these desirable native plants, I think the EAC would be happy to, to promote some of these businesses and be able to send some customers over to them. And then lastly, leadership. I think this is really an issue that's been statewide for a number of years. And I've heard from a lot of people from different communities around Indiana that have said that they sure wish they could do something about these invasive species, but frankly, nobody really knows how to do it. And they've looked for the state to provide guidance on this, and the state has to some degree. But there's other things that we can do to help shore that up. And so that's pretty much all that I have for the presentation. And I would be happy to take questions if I can figure out how to exit out of my screen, my screen here. And shut off my sharing. There we go.
Well, thank you for the presentation.
There we go.
There you go.
Okay.
Councilmembers, is there any questions of the petitioner? Okay. Okay. Councilmember Tomas Morgan, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Sasse, for your presentation. You mentioned, well, first of all, I want to say, I think the South Bend Tribune article over the weekend was really helpful piece of education. You mentioned enforcement, and the bill is not about enforcement. But in terms of working with nurseries to comply, I mean, is there an enforcement mechanism there?
I think I can, I can probably handle that one. Again, Aaron Perry, I, we've, again, education is always going to be the first priority, right, with these things. But we do, through the city code, we have all of our enforcement mechanisms through either our department, as the forestry department, right now, we, we help enforce the tree lawn and ordinances associated there. Through business licensing, we've talked with community investment and annually, as they license nurseries or landscaping firms, there can be not only educational opportunities, but punitive opportunities there as well. But, but again, it's not our intent to go out and police these things. And of course, this doesn't involve any existing items that are already planted or already in the ecosystem. Of course, we do want to work on mitigation over the course of time, but we're not going backwards and asking people to remove anything that's already there. We also put into place these, what we think is a decent runway, so folks can comply. You noted that this was a substitute bill. One of the things we changed since first reading is put the implementation of this to go into effect as of September 1st, just in advance of the fall planting season. But give some, give some time for landscaping firms and nurseries and greenhouses to kind of understand and comply with the ordinance.
Okay, at this time, if there's no other questions from council, we're going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 8721?
Yes, actually, we have three members of the public that is, are wishing to speak in support of. And that, the first speaker is Charlene Roundtree. Ms. Roundtree, if you would, unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Certainly. My name is Charlene Roundtree, and my address is 1126 Glasgow Drive in Mishawaka, Indiana 46545. And what I just want to say real fast is just that I am in support of this ordinance. And the reason why is because, as we know from experience, every area in the world, but I mean, here in the US and here in Indiana, that has ever had to deal with an influx of invasive species, whether it's through, you know, vegetation, through the nursery trade, or even just like globalized trade in general, we have always seen like impacts to not only natural resources and managing those, as well as wildlife, but also, as mentioned by Director Perry before, there's always an economic concern usually too, and it's typically negative. So I do think that just being, I mean, being mindful and having this in place to make sure that we can encourage the use of, I mean, there's plenty of native plants available, especially here in the Midwest, that could be excellent promotions, instead of using, and what might be more, might be easy to think, think about invasives right now, but you could easily consider a native to be a replacement instead, is something that we should truly be educating and promoting, because it will have not only short-term benefits, but many long-term benefits for all this as well.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Gary Harrington. Mr. Harrington, if you would unmute yourself, state your name and your address for the record, please. You have five minutes.
Hi, this is Gary Harrington. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Gary Harrington. I work at Run Village Nature Center, and I live at 30387 Dunhill Crossing, Elkhart, Indiana 46517. And so I want to say this quickly. There's a lot of folks who might be a little confused as to why invasives and non-natives are so bad after all. After all, if you look outside right now and you see Bradford pear, people say, wow, those are beautiful. They are beautiful, but looks can sometimes be a little bit deceptive. And the real, real crux of this, when it comes to. And the real crux of this, when it comes to invasives and non-natives, is our native wildlife doesn't like it. They turn their nose to eating it, they oftentimes will not house themselves in it, the birds won't nest in it. So the problem is that when it comes to things like ecosystems, ecosystems are built from the ground up, and the basis, one of the crux of that ecosystem is the fact that we have plants that are native, that are the anchor to that ecosystem, as well as insects. And so if the base of that ecosystem is damaged or altered, the whole thing can fall like a house of cards. So we do not want foreign insects and foreign plants in our community, because for the most part, they're perfectly suited for places like China, Siberia, South America, Europe, Africa, Australia, but not South Bend, Indiana. They're not giving our native wildlife and the basis of the food chain the things that they need to thrive. And they are very aggressive in many cases, some cases not so much, but some cases, they're highly aggressive, and they're taking over and displacing the native flora and fauna that we need. I'll just give a quick couple of examples of aggressive foreign plants. How about dandelions? Does anybody have dandelions in your yard? Guess what? Those are invasive, and they are not native to this area. And a couple months from now, my yard will have crabgrass in it. Those, that's not native to this area either. We used to have great, big, beautiful ash trees at Run Village, till a non-native invasive named the Emerald Ash Bore came over and unfortunately killed every ash tree that we have. Big, beautiful ash trees that they, if you like baseball, that's what they made the Louisville sluggers out of. Now they're switching to something else, I think maples, but they're detrimental in a lot of different ways, and it certainly costs a lot to remove invasives out of your lawn by treating them with chemicals, in the case of crabgrass and dandelions. So it's costly, it's burdensome, and putting a bunch of copious amounts of chemicals on your lawn is not the thing that we want to strive for. So we don't want natives, non-natives that are coming in. We value our natives, so this is a no-brainer. We can easily substitute the invasives and the non-natives for the beautiful natives that draw a lot of things like hummingbirds and butterflies to our gardens. That's all, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Andrew Tucker. Mr. Tucker, if you would, unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening, council members. My name is Andrew Tucker. I live at 127 South 34th Street, South Bend. I am a member of the Ecological Advocacy Committee, so I am pleased and proud, along with Steve and Charlene, to have had a part in helping to craft this ordinance. It's such a progressive piece of legislation that has a real opportunity to do wonderful things for our city, so extremely proud to have been a small part of this effort. I'm also an ecologist with the Nature Conservancy, and most of the work that I do centers on aquatic invasive species management issues and addressing the scourge that they are to our waterways. But one of the mantras that we have in our business is that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, and I think that's really what we're talking about here. We're talking about a progressive bill that has an opportunity to address really an entirely preventable issue, and that is the spread of invasive trees and shrubs in our landscapes. And the reason that it's preventable, as you've already heard Charlene and Gary and Steve speak to, is that we have a host of perfectly suitable native species that are generally more long-lived, they're often hardier because they're better adapted to our local environment, they provide suitable food and habitat for our native wildlife, and they're often just as aesthetically pleasing. So if you have any doubts about that, and it's already been mentioned at least once this evening, but I would encourage you to go check out the native tree trail at Pinhook. I had the opportunity to go out there with my kids this weekend for an Arbor Day event, and it was exciting to see the eastern hemlock tree planted there, and we'll be able to go back and visit that with my kids, you know, in years to come, and watch that species and all the other trees on that trail grow. So that trail, I think, is sort of a foreshadowing of what we could see across our city if this legislation goes forward. So I appreciate your time and effort to look out for the best interests of our city, and that's certainly what you would be doing in supporting this bill. And also, let me just take a brief moment to thank Brent Thompson, our city forester, for all the great work that he and his team are doing in caring for our tree scapes and shrubs across the city, and I think that in supporting this bill will make their lives and jobs a bit easier, too. So thank you again for your time and would encourage you to support this great legislation.
Thank you for your comments.
That exhausts our list of support.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 8721?
There is no one from the public expressing an interest to speak in opposition of this Bill 8721.
Okay, thank you. Then at this point, the public hearing on Bill 8721 is now closed. Council members, is there anyone that wishes to make a statement in regards to 8721? Okay, I do not see anyone. I'll entertain a motion then regarding Bill 8721.
I would like to make a motion to send substitute Bill 8721 to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We'll need to take the roll call, please. Oh, okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed, anyone opposed? Okay, then the motion has passed. Bill 8721 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, council, for your support. Thank you, Chair McBride, for sponsoring this bill, and Attorney Palmer for helping to write it. I can't think of a better way to celebrate Arbor Day that's coming up this Friday. Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much. Bill's on third reading. The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading, and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, would you give substitute Bill 8721 a third reading?
Yes. 8721, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 19, Article 1, Division 2, Section 19-13 of the South Bend Municipal Code to Identify Species of Vegetation Prohibited from Sale, Planting, or Propagating Within a City, and Amending Section 19-14 to Identify Species of Vegetation Prohibited in the Tree and Lawn Areas in the City.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ms. Goski, is there a recommendation for the committee of the whole regarding substitute Bill 8721?
Yes, Chair. Bill 8721 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would now entertain a motion regarding substitute Bill 8721.
I move for passage of Bill 8721.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
Here's Vice President McBride. I'm voting on legislation itself. You have to take a roll call vote.
Thank you so much.
You tried.
Could you please read the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Ms. Goski?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you so much. Resolutions. This is the portion of the council meeting where the common council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. Each proposed resolution will be read by the city clerk, a report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, to which the bill was referred to for an advisory review and recommendation then will be given. During the public portion on each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you please give your name, address, and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal for the presenter of the bill. The parliamentarian will keep the time and will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to speak. At this time, Resolution 2103, I will turn to the parliamentarian for the correct language for us to rescind the motion to correct the date for its continuance.
Vice President McBride, it had been moved and voted in favor of that the bill would be postponed until the committee meeting of June 17th. That vote remains intact, so it will be heard again at the committee meeting on June 17th unless a further motion to postpone is made and passed at that time.
Thank you so much. Counsel, just want to make sure everybody have clarity on that. There will be no further action. Just want to make sure that anyone, if you had any questions, this is an opportunity. Other than that, at the committee meeting on the 17th is when the vote will take place to continue it for the June 28th meeting.
Got it.
Thank you so much. Clerk Jones, would you read Resolution 2115, please?
Yes. 2115, a resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 4755 Ameritech Drive, South Bend, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year real property tax abatement for Delta Management Company, LLC.
Thank you so much. As this is a confirming resolution, there would not be a committee report, but is there a presenter? And I ask if it is, would you please state your name and address?
Of course. Good evening, counsel. This is Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development in the Department of Community Investment, 14th floor of the City Counting Building. At the last council meeting, a unanimous support was given to a declaratory resolution for the expansion of KW Custom Controls, also known as Kuntz Wagner. The petitioner is Delta Management Company, which is the actual owner of the building. The quick details, just to reiterate, it's a five-year phase-in. The petitioner will benefit from a 188K in abatement during that time, but they will pay 34 during the course of that abatement as it phases in. And the estimate on the entire building, the existing plus the new addition, is $216,000 a year in property taxes paid post-abatement. This is going to support nearly $2 million in private investment with that addition, an additional expansion, retains 50 South Bend jobs with a total annual payroll of 3.6 million, and will create 20 new jobs with a total annual payroll of over $800,000. I believe we have Mr. Agostino and Mr. Harland from the petitioner here, and I'll allow them to add anything they'd like to before we go to questions. Thank you.
This is Peter Agostino with offices at 131 South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana, on behalf of the petitioners. And I know that you have been informed, as I provided information, that the revised investment is coming down to 1.4 million. I just want to point out, though, that that does not change anything at all about the need for the abatement or the fact that the job growth remains the same. I think the real difference is in the gross numbers on the benefit and the abatement. The difference remains the same, although the numbers come down a little bit. I just want to be upfront about that, and I think Mr. Harland can explain those. I do want to make a statement in terms about the importance of abatement, and I want to use my own law firm as an example. In 2002, we bought a building here at 131 South Taylor Street. There was 13 of us that came over here, probably five or six lawyers and seven or eight staff, and we received an abatement at that time that was valued about $21,000. We have spent, I'm sure, well over half a million dollars in property taxes. Since then, we have paid numerous local plumbers, HVAC, roofers, painters, laborers, paving and parking lot in the community here in St. Joseph County, many in South Bend, and our payroll has probably more than tripled. We probably have close to 40 people here now. And I mention that because I know that there's background policy discussions about the importance of abatement. Abatement does help bring businesses into the community, and my office and law firm, we're proud to be here in South Bend. We're proud to be here on the near northwest side of South Bend, here on at Washington and Taylor, and we've grown and grown and have stayed here and have no plans to leave. And I think you're going to see the same type of commitment from the File family and Mr. Harland, long-term members of the community who are committed, and I, it is important to do this, and it's important to do this one as well. And I'll let Bill talk a little bit about any comments he'd like to make, and then we'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Bill Harland, offices at 4755 Ameritech Drive in South Bend. Just wanted to address the couple of things that Pete mentioned and also echo the comment about the importance of the tax abatement. This, our business, KW Custom Controls, was a restart of a bankrupt business where many, many jobs were lost, approximately 100 jobs were lost back in July of 2018. We rehired folks back, a much smaller number than that at the time. We have since hired additional people, and we are now facing, after having sort of built-back trust from our prior customers of the business, we are now facing the opportunity for more growth, but only if we can accommodate more projects for which we need a larger facility. So as a business that's still coming out of bank, you know, coming out of the bankruptcy process fairly recently, just hitting break even, the tax abatement is critical to this decision for us. We did apply and had the opportunity to speak to you last month, and at that time, we had an initial, you know, an initial scope and initial estimates since that time, at which time we sort of estimated a million eight cost. And in the intervening time, we had the opportunity to review the scope, and frankly, within the confines of our resources, we narrowed it down, made some substantial changes, still very much able to address the growth in the business, but, you know, made some other changes. That's the first point. And then the second, very notable point, we had to begin the tax abatement process, but had not yet negotiated the final price with our contractor, our builder. We have had the opportunity to do that, negotiate, and have that negotiation reflect the revised scope, and again, as many of you know, there are, we are in an environment of rising prices on many raw materials, and that is something we're facing, too, but have the opportunity, if we can move forward now, save substantial sum versus if we wait on, in particular, the steel building. So that's why the particulars changed a bit from what you've seen. It does not change at all the number of jobs we will retain, the number of jobs we will add, the wages of those where the folks, where the supplies will be purchased from, where the people building the building will be living, et cetera. So we're looking forward to getting started and appreciate the chance to come back before you.
Thank you. Are there any other presenters?
No.
Thank you. If not, council members, do you have any questions you would like to ask the petitioner at this time regarding Resolution 2115? at this time regarding Resolution twenty-one fifteen?
I'd just like to make a brief statement. I work at the same law firm as Mr. Agostino, Anderson Agostino and Keller. I do not represent these clients of his and have not been involved in this case in any way whatsoever. I just wanted to point out my relationship with Mr. Agostino. Thank you.
Thank you for your transparency. Ms. Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, Vice President McBride. Thank you, sponsors and presenters. I, Mr. Buckenmeyer, just going back to the second slide on your PowerPoint, could you just clarify, does, does any of those numbers change?
Sorry, I tried to unmute and got muted again. Yes, inevitably, and keep in mind that these numbers are all estimates. Again, as I, as we try to emphasize each time we present like this, the, we give an estimate of what we can best estimate the value will be based on the investment by the petitioner, shave some off of that for depreciation, put that at three percent for commercial real estate tax, and then give it a value. We can't reasonably ascertain what the assessor will ultimately do and what actual value it will have. So those numbers are really just placeholders to give us a range or a very rough estimate of the value. So inevitably, some of those would change, not only from the level of investment they're making, but again, just by this, for the sake of being rough estimates of what we can best guess the assessor would do.
And if I could add in response to that as well, that if you just looked at the cost differences, if you reduce the, the tax effect based on cost alone, you're reducing the value of the abatement at the same rate that you're reducing the amount of total tax payments and what that values. So the difference remains the same because the reduction's at the same level. So the, the benefit number remains the same. It is also very possible, frankly, that even though there's a bargain on, on construction of the building, that the valuation by the assessor at fair market value still puts it up there at a higher number. But using the cost numbers alone, it's still a plus gain to the, on the equation in terms of getting more tax out of this than what the abatement costs.
Thank you, Mr. Agostino.
Thank you. Since this is a confirming resolution, again, there is no public hearing. Counsel, would you like to make any additional statements? If not, I'll entertain a motion regarding Resolution twenty-one fifteen. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no. Take the roll. Take the roll. I'm gonna get it right, Ms. White. I promise I'm gonna get it right. Clerk Jones, would you please read the roll?
Yes. Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you very much.
Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution twenty-one seventeen?
Twenty-one seventeen, a resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as three oh one East Sample Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six zero one, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Mossberg and Company.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Yes. Again, this is Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development in the Department of Community Investment, offices on the fourteenth floor of the City County Building. Good evening again, counsel. Appreciate your time. And again, last council meeting, unanimous support was given to the declaratory resolution supporting, excuse me, Mossberg Printing's two-point-eight-million-dollar investment in a new printing press replacing two in their facility. The high-level details of this are, again, it's a five-year phase-in, as all personal property tax abatements are. Again, this is an abatement on personal property taxes on a capital investment. The benefit they'll see is about, again, as I noted before, just as with real property, these are estimates, but we estimate there will be about a one-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-dollar benefit. They will pay thirty-five thousand dollars throughout the term as it phases in, and then about thirty thousand dollars a year post-abatement. This supports about three million dollars in new private investment, retains one-hundred-and-ten jobs with a total payroll of five-point-five million per year. I believe Gene, Gene Crumlish is here, and if, Gene, if you'd like to add anything else, and then we'll open it up.
Dan, good evening. With Gene, this is James Hellman. I'm the president and owner of Mossberg and Company, and we're located at three oh one East Sample Street here in South Bend. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. First, I'd like to thank the council for considering the, the support of Mossberg and Company. As Dan mentioned, this tax abatement supports our company in acquiring a new press that replaces two older presses that quite truthfully are just no longer efficient nor profitable in our competitive industry. And the purchase allows us to compete in our industry, to maintain our printing division and, and its associated employees. It brings some advanced manufacturing technology and processes to our company and the opportunity to train our employees in these new processes as well, and we're pretty excited about that. We've been in business here in South Bend for over ninety-one years, and this purchase and abatement support our continuing operations. So thank you. Gene?
Hi, I'm Gene Crumlish, Director of Administration here at Mossberg, three oh one East Sample Street, South Bend, Indiana. Thank you again for your time. Just a reminder, we've made two-point-three million dollars in capital improvements since two thousand and sixteen without coming before the council and asking for an abatement. It is absolutely critical that we replace this press and may, to maintain our workforce and our, our business customer base, and we respectfully ask for each of your approval today, and thank you very much for your support.
Thank you so much. Is there any other comment or another presenter?
No.
No.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn to council members. Do you have any questions that you would like to ask the petitioner regarding Resolution twenty-one seventeen? There's no public hearing as this is a confirming resolution. Counsel, at this time, would you like to make any final statements?
I'd like to move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, would you please read Resolution twenty-one twenty-one?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Twenty-one twenty-one, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, calling for a recommitment to the partnership between the city of South Bend and the Housing Authority of South Bend to work together to create and implement an affordable housing plan for low-income residents of South Bend.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes. There was a committee reported, and we're in favor. The residential committee met and, and we sent it to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you so much. Is there a presenter?
Yes, it is. Henry Davis, Jr., fifty-one seventeen, Outlaw Drive, Second District Councilman. Whereas on March fifth, nineteen forty-one, the common council created the South Bend Housing Authority pursuant to the U.S. Housing Act of nineteen thirty-seven and the Acts of the Indiana General Assembly of nineteen thirty-seven. And whereas the mayor of the city of South Bend appoints each of the members of the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, and whereas the Housing Authority of South Bend, mission statements declares it is the mission of the Housing Authority of South Bend to provide safety and affordable housing assistance to individuals and their families in a manner that is respectful, professional, and service-oriented. The South Bend Housing Authority is, is committed to maximizing its existing resources and working in partnership with the community to assist residents in reaching individual and family goals, including those of self-sufficiency through education, increasing employment and homeownership opportunities. And whereas the South Bend Housing Authority goal is to provide housing that is safe, desirable, affordable housing with superior services. And whereas the need for affordable housing is now greater than ever before, generally due to COVID-nineteen pandemic, but also more specifically due to the need of relocation of residents of the Rabbi, Rabbi Shulman Plaza Apartments. And whereas effective as of January twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one, Housing Authority South Bend Public Housing Waitlist is closed for all unit size, and the South Bend Housing Authority will not be accepting applications to further notice. And whereas the city of South Bend has a history of cooperation agreements with the South Bend Housing Authority for construction of low-income housing units dating back to at least nineteen sixty-one, and whereas the current unique circumstances and increased need and additional availability of resources mandates, the recommitment of both the city of South Bend Housing Authority and a part, two-way partnership, excuse me, two-way partnership to work together via the Consolidated Plan for the city. And whereas consolidating planning process serves as a framework of community-wide dialogue to identify housing and community development priorities that align and focus funding from HUD formula, block grant programs, community development block grant program, home investment partnership program, housing trust fund, emergency solution grants program, and housing opportunities for persons with AIDS program. And whereas under federal and state legislation resulting from COVID-nineteen pandemic, additional funding for affordable housing will be made available to the city of South Bend and St. Joseph County to create a set-side allocation via or via the consolidation plan, annual action plan amendments for Housing Authority South Bend. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one, the South Bend Common Council hereby commits to the partnership with Housing Authority of South Bend, Indiana, and the city of South Bend, that it urges the city and the South Bend Housing Authority to similarly commit. Section two, the purpose of this partnership is to maximize available resources to create, implement housing plan for low-income residents that is safe, desirable, affordable, with superior services. Section three, such a plan will benefit not only the residents of the housing, but also all other residents in the city of South Bend. Section four, with this agreement, the common council affirms that based upon a comprehensive review of current public housing portfolio, including consideration of historic REAC scores, urgent action is required to address conditions that could threaten the health and safety of residents and undermine the long-term viability of the units. The common council additionally affirm that, excuse me, considering that the federal government's historically funding of public housing, operating support and capital funding, the most effective available tools for addressing immediate conditions and ensuring long, longer-term financial and physical viability will involve shifting priorities so that the maximum support can be provided to the Housing Authority with the utilization of the current and the future funding opportunities. Section five, each partnership should therefore be, hold on, each partner should therefore reach out and recruit additional partners to help fulfill this goal.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other sponsors who'd like to make any comments?
I would just like to say that we had great conversations with the South Bend Housing Authority and the vision and the new leadership and the direction that they're going is exciting, and as we all know that we need affordable housing in South Bend, it's very important. So I'm supportive of this because it's what's best for our community.
Thank you. Counsel, Hammond?
Just that I would like to welcome the new leadership at the Housing Authority. South Bend needs committed and fair housing, and we have some pretty significant issues, as Councilman Lee stated, with affordable housing stock in the city, so I'm hoping that we can make some very solid headway. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman Davis, for allowing me to co-sponsor this bill.
Thank you for finding me.
Thank you. It's definitely a breath of fresh air to hear the positive initiatives that we have from the Housing Authority and the support of the council, and knowing the importance of the quality of life and the housing stock for the city of South Bend. So I'm excited to be a part of this and ask that, I'm sure, the co-sponsors and sponsors that the council supports this bill.
Absolutely. We're not doing any public discussion, am I correct? Would the members of the Housing Authority be considered public?
They would be considered presenters.
Presenters?
Yeah.
Well, they're still on.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Nope, no problem. At this time, I would like to turn to the Housing Authority to see if you have any comments.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to make any comments. My name is Catherine Lambert. I'm the executive director of the Housing Authority. We're located at five oh one Alonzo Watkins Drive, South Bend, Indiana, four six five zero one. We greatly appreciate the partnership that's being presented here, the opportunity to work collaboratively with the city. We come to you as the largest affordable housing provider to the city of South Bend, with over eight hundred units of public affordable housing and more than two thousand housing choice vouchers. We're engaging in a plan of growth within the city, and we look forward to the opportunity to bring back quality, affordable housing, ensuring, as was indicated by the speaker earlier, that housing opportunities for low-income persons are fairly applied through fair housing initiatives, and we just thank you overwhelmingly for the support that we're receiving. We do have a lot of work to do. It is going to be a big job, and it's certainly not something that we can carry alone, so we can't thank you enough. One of my development staff members over the line, Gerald, would you like to have a comment?
You know, I would just, just like to piggyback on thanking everyone, really over the course of the last several weeks, outside of the invitation to, to see what we are trying to accomplish, I want to thank the council for inviting us to see what they want to accomplish and how we meet in the middle. I think that often housing authorities are often shunned, sometimes forgotten, and so for this council and such a pivotal time, not just a pandemic, but the ongoing plight and legacy and need for affordable housing here in South Bend, we are excited not only to bring a refreshed vision and a strategic opportunity to develop affordable housing, but I was also encouraged and want to encourage us all to understand that the Housing Authority is much more than housing. We believe in self-sufficiency, which means that we are supporting our families becoming homeowners, going back to school, achieving unique goals, and that takes services, that takes partnership, and that takes resources. And so this opportunity to realign, particularly through the consolidated planning, of course, with the community investment, and absolutely through the leadership of the mayor and the council, we are both excited and both, and at the same time, humbled by the challenges that we will take on together, but most importantly, will achieve, I think, some shared goals and mind our vision. So I want to thank everybody again for, I think, the open door, the transparency, and the opportunity to be of service.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'll turn to my council members to see if you have any questions that you would like to ask the petitioner at this time. Now I will go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in favor of this resolution?
There is no one from the public that is wishing to speak in favor of this resolution.
With the same, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of Resolution 2121?
There is no one from the public that has expressed interest in speaking in opposition of Resolution 2121.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Counsel, at this time, would you like to make any final statements?
Yeah, I would just like to thank everybody that participated as a co-sponsor on this particular piece of legislation. Obviously, this opens up another world for us, and I think that this is something that we can be grateful that is happening here in the city. I'm talking about all nine council members. This is not a Second District thing or a Third or First. I think it's a city of South Bend win. And so I'm looking forward to the discussion with the mayor's office on Wednesday to further detail and lay out our next steps on how this is going to come to fruition for us, the residents here, and give us some type of standard of how we are going to continue to govern for these next couple of years. I think that this is awesome. This is an awesome opportunity, and thank you.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion regarding Resolution 2121.
Move for passage of Bill. What's the number? 2121.
Second.
The roll, please.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Resolution 2121 is now adopted. Bill's on first reading. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 8821 a first reading?
Yes. 8821, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 601 and 605 North Eddie Street.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to send Bill 8821 to BZA for public hearing on May 3, and to zoning and annexation and council for public hearing on May 10.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion's carried. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 8921 a first reading?
8921, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1624 Marietta, 717 East Dubel, 1618 Marietta, 707 East Dubel, 1614 Marietta, and 709 East Dubel, 7, and 713 East Dubel.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to make a motion that 8921 goes to the Plan Commission and set up for zoning and annexation meeting on the 24th of May.
Second.
Thank you. I just, for the record, would like to.
Plan Commission on May 11. I'm sorry, and Zone Annexation Committee on 5/24 for second and third reading.
Actually, I appreciate that, but the note says, and I think I made the mistake earlier, it says May 17 for.
Plan Commission.
Plan Commission.
Okay.
And that was my notes that I was misreading, but it, it is, that date is May 17.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that 8921 go to the Plan Commission on 4/5/17, and then back to the council for second and third reading, public hearing on May 24.
Thank you.
Second.
That was almost perfect. You guys might give me a second on that one.
Thank you, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Motion carried. Clerk, could you please read Bill 9021?
9021, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 2322 Olive Street, Councilmanic District Number 6, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to send Bill 9021 to BZA for May 3, and to the Zoning Annexation Committee and the council, public hearing for third reading on May 10.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's carried. Thank you. Is there any unfinished business at this time? Seeing none, is there any new business?
Absolutely, Chair. May I?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out a couple of things that happened during the course of this meeting. I don't know if everyone was paying attention, but I think that there was a lot of conversation about poverty, but it wasn't necessarily in a sense of just saying the word poverty. We talked about the amount of trash that is being collected or not being collected. We talked about a family dollar being a eyesore, which is, usually is. We, conversations always circle around crime. And I think, again, when Sheila asked that question of, of CEO Jeff Ray about the traffic patterns, I think that that was like, you know, very telling. What I'm going to say is that we have, obviously, we have a poverty problem. It's there. I, I don't think that we can move around to get around it. The only thing that I am saying, and also what's going on, getting phone calls, the conversations about the property taxes going really, really high. One reason was because the school corporation put the referendum through, and everybody is wanting more money. What I'm getting at is that the problems that exist that continue to persist here in this environment has a lot to do with the folks who are in poverty. It doesn't mean that those people are weighing us down. It's because everybody else is in poverty. You can't get away from it. We're on the same ship. So i, if you believe that because the west side of the river is bad, and we can just cut you off and then go on across to the east side of the river, and we won't have any problems, come again. It's going to follow. So I think that as this council continues to move forward, and now with the questioning and also with some of the new policy matters, keep that in mind, because those things are something that will impact us as we move forward. This is a high cost of living right now with very little return on results back to the city.
Thank you so much for your comments. Any other counsel with any new business? If none, I will move to the privilege of the floor. Again, disrespectful root or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and/or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person may result in the individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. Individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting shall be 30 minutes. The parliamentarian will keep time and will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. Individuals should not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on the agenda. The council president may assign a topic raised by an individual during the privileges of the floor to the appropriate council member, and/or request the city clerk to contact a member of the city administration for review, and topics assigned shall be responded to the next scheduled council meeting. Are there any individuals that would like to speak in privilege of the floor?
This is Dawn from the clerk's office, and I do not see any individuals who are expressing interest to speak on the privilege of the floor.
Thank you so much. At this time, I would call for adjournment. Is there a motion?
So move.
We are adjourned.
Good job, Sharon.
Thank you, Vice President.
Yeah, he did it.
Good job. You did a good job. You did a good job.